Justice Soro.
Actually, I'm going to actually...
Special.
No, no, I'm going to go with public participation. Do we have any public participation at this time? Please, if you would, and just... I know that we know you, but if you can identify yourself again for the record and for people at home.
Good evening, my name is Blanche Tanner, Farmington resident, taxpayer.
Pull the mic down a little bit. There, that way they can, that way it picks up on the camera.
I just have a request. When the student, when the high school program of studies is available for distribution, I wondered if I could get a copy. That's really my only request tonight.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public participation at this time? Okay. I'm actually, before we approve minutes, I'm going to jump ahead to the acknowledgement of our scholar athletes. We have two NHIA scholar athletes here tonight along with Mrs. Peabody, our Athletic Director and Dean of Students. So, and then we have a presentation, but Mrs. Peabody, if you could kind of go up and take the mic with the two students and introduce them and talk a little bit briefly about what it takes to qualify to be an NHIA scholar athlete. And then I'm going to recognize Mr. Petrie.
Thank you for the opportunity to showcase these two wonderful students. The NHIA asks for us to choose students based on their academic standing, B-plus or better. They also have to be positive leaders and role models in the community, in the community service. And they also have to play at least two sports for the year. And these two were above and beyond for those characteristics.
And there was recently a ceremony at, over, in Concord?
At, yes, in Concord, there was a ceremony celebrating all the athletes in the state for all the divisions.
Excellent.
And they got to go up on the stage and look pretty and all that.
I reached out to Mr. Petrie last week, our state representative. Mr. Petrie annually does a recognition, and so he's here with us tonight to recognize the students. So, Mr. Petrie, if you would.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Joe Petrie, I represent Stratford II, which is just Farmington. This is a great honor for me because it's very tough to do all things, like academics, athletics. And you find, if you look at the DOE website, that people that, young students who get involved in extracurricular activities actually do veteran school, which I would have thought, when I, when I found this, I would have thought that kids at work or kids that use the calc- I mean, there's all kinds of different things in, on the website, but it's, it's very tough, I know, but it shows leadership skills. And it's a great honor to honor these two students. I wish we had more. This year, I actually got the governor to sign this proclamation. I got, I was in a meeting with him today, and he did, he did sign the proclamation. What the proclamation says, "This flag was flown over the New Hampshire State House in honor of the Hampshire scholar athlete Jake Goyers and Katrina Radcliffe in the Year of Our Lord," and that was today, "in the Independence of the United States 242." And signed by myself, Representative Horgan, and the governor. So, it's, if you will, Jake's. And you can pull that flag up. I hope somebody's got a camera because mine just went, my cellphone just went dead.
And just a quick correction, that's Christina Radcliffe. Christina.
Christina?
Yes.
No, with a C, right?
With a K. I sent him the name twice because I misspelled it the first time.
I really appreciate you doing the work you did. And one thing that I would like to see happen is you get back to us, myself and the, and the board, because we like to see what you do once you leave. And one thing about that flag, when you get a dorm room or whatever, you can display that flag proudly. And that's, that's something that, you know, we've got a great state and we've got a great town, and you're proud of that.
Can we get the four of you together for a group picture?
And would you, let's unfurl.
Yeah. Yep. All the guests.
Put my presses here.
We are representing.
Yeah.
Because that would be embarrassing.
Yeah, put the chair up.
The chair was built in Maine.
But now it's backwards.
How do we do? Kind of get them even, bring out one down, come down there, beautiful.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, approval of minutes, minutes of February 19th, 2018, public session. So, moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Ms. McElhenney, discussion on these. I think I noticed, oh.
Yeah, I have like three corrections.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll let you guys go.
All right, it was Vice Chair opened the meeting. Mrs. Tanner, ready?
Ready.
Instead of read.
Thank you.
And the board voted on February 1st, the vote was three to zero with one abstention. I think you said that it was unanimous. But it's, with an abstention?
Yeah, if an abstention doesn't, doesn't negate or...
Okay.
...unanimous, as long as nobody is in opposition, it's unanimous.
Okay. Those are what I have.
I have, yes. Oh. Go ahead, you dropped me. Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine. Under Henry Wilson Middle School's report... Yes. On the last line of the data meeting, I'm just going to find it here, I apologize. Let's see, data meetings, it says, "This will be so that we can begin to target even," target even? Is that the ending of the sentence, or is that, is there more to add to that? I couldn't remember.
I think there's something missing.
Yeah, it didn't sound right.
I'll go back to the video recording.
I don't think so.
I'll reference the video recording to get the last of that sentence. Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Linda? Page six, oh, I'm sorry, stand. No, go ahead.
I just had a, the insert report details, can we approve it without the details being inserted?
I need those report details.
Because there's a, on page five, there's an insert report detail.
Isn't it the report from last month?
It's not in the, it's not the same, and it's not in the folder, the newer one, it wasn't in the folder.
I thought it was, okay.
So, if we could just get that and then we'll paste it in, so I don't know if you guys want to table these minutes till that's pasted in.
I think we can accept them as amended, because the amendment is to add those in.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other one I have is, right at the very beginning, it says Joel arrived, but it doesn't, assuming it should say the time, and the parentheses need to be closed.
Yeah, I don't, was that cut off on the physical one?
Something got cut off, I think.
Thank you.
Page six, Mrs. Cardinal, under the names of all the people being nominated, Gary Noyes is actually N-O-Y-E-S.
Oh, heaven's sake. Thank you.
Miss Vaughn?
I had two on page three. When the question came up about the school resource officer's salary, it's set per the police CBA, not the Farmington School District's teacher CBA. And then for the page six top, Amanda Russell is part-time, and she's on step 18.
You have a question there, too?
Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for those, I'll call for a vote as amended to include that report as well. All those in favor? Aye. I don't know if I should abstain because I wasn't here for part of it.
It's your report, you're missing it.
Before we go on to the next set of minutes, how are we doing with getting bites on a recording secretary?
We've had a nibble, but not necessarily a bite.
Those of you watching from home, we are looking for a recording secretary for the, for the Farmington School Board, someone to, to take our minutes. Mrs. Cardinal is the secretary for the board, but not really the recording secretary. And so she's doing it now, but I don't want it to keep going on much longer because it really takes away from her participation and focus on the meeting, so just thought I'd throw that out there while we're on TV. A motion for non-public session one from February 19th. So, moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Ms. McElhenney, discussion?
Will this add step 18 in there?
Right, same correction there. Okay.
There was a question about resignation.
The resignation was Richard Vervoe.
Yeah, did we accept a resignation in non-public or public?
Public.
Public.
So, I'll pull it out of those non-publics.
I mean, we, we did, we, I gave it to you in non-public.
You presented it to us.
We, we did it as...
We reaffirmed it?
In public.
In public?
Yeah.
Does my notes only have the nominations done in public as well? So...
Do you want to just reaffirm?
Can we just go ahead and do it tonight?
Yeah.
For these public minutes, or reaffirm it there?
We reaffirm it there.
Thank you.
The same correction for the noise spelling it.
Oh, okay, yeah. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote as amended. All those in favor? Aye. I'm going to abstain because I missed just the first part of that.
One other thing before we go on, should that be John McDougall Sr.?
You did say that, yes.
All those in favor with that amendment? All right, I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Okay. Non-public session two from February 19th. So, moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Mr. Frida, discussion on these. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Non-public session three from February 19th. So, moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney, any discussion on these? All those in favor? Aye. And entertain a motion for non-public session four from February 19th. So, moved by Ms. McElhenney, second by Mr. Frida, any discussion on these? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Cardinal.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to jump down to reports, financials.
You'd like to start with the revenue report first? Just let me know when you're all set and you've loaded.
The all funds?
Revenue, yes. Just let me know, and I'm ready to, you've got it pulled up. Are you all set?
Oh, yes, I'm all set.
All right, I just saw your feet moving. I just wanted to make sure I was on your spot. So, essentially on the page one, the general fund, I mean, that is still tracking as predicted. But what I would like to do is just to report on page five, where we spoke last month in reference to the food service accounts. I believe it was Mrs. Cardinal that had asked about some clarification about the numbers budgeted for food service sales. So, essentially, the column on the left that says heading "Year Before Last, 2015-2016", those are the actual revenues that were collected from the Cafe Services when they were the management company. We received a total of $418,104. That's comprised of the cash register sales, the state revenue, the federal revenue. The next column over, which is 2016-17, which is when we had Chart Wells, and it says "Last Year Actual Revenues" is the heading, those numbers are, are much lower. We received an aggregate $349,260. So, it's 17% less than, than the year before. We do realize that that was also a year that we no longer had the Middleton student population, but, let's see. So, when I build these revenue budgets, it is based upon the proposal that the food service company provides to us as far as what they feel that they would be able to collect at the register and what is also entitled in terms of state and federal pieces. So, what I'd like to just talk a little bit about is where we are this year in terms of what Cafe Services has received to date. So, in the column where it says "Current Period or Actual Year-to-Date Revenues for Cafe Services," they have proposed that they would have 94,413 lunch sales and 27,412 in breakfast sales. So, right now, as of the last claims at the end of February, we are at 47,507 in lunch, which is about 50% of the expected budget.
Of the annual projection.
But there's still 40% left in the year to go, so it's going to be pretty challenging for them to be able to meet that. And then also breakfast is also, breakfast is actually picked up pretty well now that we have the breakfast after the bell program, which is perfect for students starting their day. It's just a great way for, for kids to start their day on a positive, on a positive note. And we do receive state and federal monies there, so those numbers are also a bit up, but still, just, we're watching those numbers technically. What happens is Cafe Services has to stick with what they anticipated, a $9,218 deficit at the end of the year, if that deficit cannot change. They've got some tough targets to be able to meet. If you don't have any questions, any further questions on revenues, we could skip over to general fund if you're ready.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So, in the general fund, I've included some notes for you, and just highlight, for example, on line three... Just tell me when you're ready. Line three, I've got a deficit showing there of $3,317. That's actually something that's going to get reclassified, it's a person who's working as a substitute, and substitute should be charged down on the actual substitute lines, whether they're, you know, short-term or long-term. And so the other thing is that on lines 13, 14, and 15, we're actually tracking fairly well with those kinds of wages remaining in those substitute lines. And largely because we've had... Yeah, and that's exactly... ...not getting substitutes, you know, so... We're, we're at 50% remaining, 60% of the, of the school year remaining, though.
So, when we pay, so if a para goes into the classroom, we give them the equivalent of the sub, does that come out of the sub-line, or does that come out of their salary line?
That should be coming out of the para sub-line, or in the, they're subbing for a teacher.
Right.
It would come out of the teacher line. Teacher sub-line. And actually, we don't have many doing that, because unless it's a one-on-one para whose student is absent...
Absent, right.
We can't pull a para to substitute. So, we don't have many who are actually falling into that this year because of the change in the regulation.
Okay.
Just want to bring to your attention lines 118, 119, and 120, where it does show that we do have, here's that we do have some significant savings in terms of, let's see, let me pull this, in terms of para staffing, so... Open positions. Basically, that's what it is, open positions and some other positions that have been able to be funded through a grant. So, we're still going and doing a reconciliation, and when I see, we do do reconciliations in September and October, but then you kind of go back and take another look at it and say, "Okay, well, what else has changed since, since the last four months?" So, just want to bring to your attention on that. We've had two or three, two positions anyway, that we have been largely unfilled most of the year. We've just now gotten a couple of positions filled, and I have another resignation, so...
A lot of turnover in the para educator?
I don't know that it's so much a lot of turnover, it's more need. And so, as we need to add people, we're having a very difficult time getting people to do that. And it's, and it's pretty much statewide.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's struggling with that right now.
It's not an easy position.
There's a shortage. On line 201, where we have our vocational tuition, we've just received our first invoice from Governor Wentworth for $14,943. And if I'm looking at the number of students and what the billing is, it means that we will probably have a savings, and we could see a savings of maybe $40,000 in this particular line at year end.
How about line 174? We have a savings of $46,000 in that line.
Let's see, let's see, so the line 174? So, that's special education tuition for middle school students. We had a number of students that reunified with their parents over the course of the summer, and so therefore that, that wound up in the savings, they transferred to another school.
Okay.
Let's see, on line 268, we're going to be re-examining the SRO budget now that we have a new SRO assignment, so we'll be getting those numbers from the town, because I do anticipate that we aren't going to necessarily see that $32,800 savings there. And then my last comment is that on line 696, we have had a shortage in terms of propane at Henry Wilson School, pretty much because we are not in a locked rate. So, I think going forward, what we need to do is to be working on some bid pricing and working on locking in that rate. So, it's left us a little, so we have had to do a transfer of $1,000 for that. That's pretty much what I have. Any questions? Glad to try and pinpoint.
What's the reason for the, so when you mentioned the resource officer, is it because the new resource officer comes in at a higher level?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
As a more experienced officer under their collective bargaining agreement, yes. Would you want me to ask for my name?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, no problem. I was actually at the town budget meeting. No, not a problem. And I just wanted to pass along some questions that they had. First off, Tim Brown had asked, and I guess he asked it at the meeting prior, but where we stand at the six-month point in our budget? And I didn't exactly know how to answer that, because I didn't know exactly what he was looking for, however, I'm sure he'll ask it at the next meeting again, and if we could just come up with...
Does it say it?
It says it there, but I don't know if he's looking for exactly a percentage, or, because we have the revenues.
I told him we were on track.
And part of it's hard, because it's not like the year is divided in nice neat halves that you can say, "Well, half is done," and this because encumbrances are, are weighed more heavily upfront with salaries.
Right. And we discussed that the first time you asked it, so...
Yeah. So, part of what, what I do is doing some projections. I mean, you'll see here that there's some salary lines, for example, extracurricular, well, that's because those assignments have not actually been completed yet, and come May and June, especially in, in June, by the second week of June, that line will be pretty much depleted. I mean, throughout the year, the employee does the contract, does the work, and then administration signs off on it. So, at this point, someone may look at that and say, "Oh, well, they haven't spent anything." But yes, it has been, it has an obligation attached to it. We also look at, we are avoiding year-long type of encumbrances. I think the only exception to that would be like electricity, where we're going to have the encumbrance for the entire electrical budget, and then we draw down on that. But we ask that staff, we ask that staff generate their encumbrances to actual real vendors, real products, real goods, when they know that they are going to need them, so we will... Yeah, we don't just put in shadows.
Was that the only question from the Budget Committee?
The only other thing that they just wanted to follow up on in regards to the savings in the healthcare, they wanted to know more entrance, information on the health district life safety information. That was mentioned at the last meeting, how there's a cost savings.
Okay.
And I just didn't feel comfortable enough presenting that in its entirety, so I just told them that we'd get back to them in regards to that.
I'll give you a bit of a narrative, how's that? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean...
I'm sorry, I thought that we were, I thought that the two of you were going to go to meetings during budget season.
Yeah.
The two administrators.
I think we had only said what that specifically meant was the public hearing and the presentation of the budget, not in that order.
That definitely was not my understanding. My understanding was during budget season, which is about...
So, what is the start and end?
Well, to me, it's October through, until the budget passes. Because my, here's my...
Because the new budget is not on the agenda for the Budget Committee meeting, it's monthly reports that's on it now. So, anything for the new budget, if it were on the agenda for the Budget Committee meeting, then yeah, definitely, we'd have to see more.
When we're in budget season, which we are now, regardless of what's on the Budget Committee agenda, when we're being asked questions that board members can't answer, I don't necessarily think that that puts us in good light. I think we should have people there that can answer those questions right then and there. Well, please respond. Ms. McElhenney's had a meeting and she...
That is in direct conflict with what you had said before.
Absolutely not.
About having school staff there.
Absolutely not. I wanted these two staff members there once budget season started and ended, and it ends when the budget passes. During that timeframe of summer months, when we're trying to, when we're trying to close school, hire, and open school, that's when I don't think these individuals should be there.
That, that definitely is not the way that I understood what you wanted back when we discussed whether or not they would go to monthly meetings.
Well, I thought it was that the board wanted.
Right, as a board, we discussed whether or not our school staff would go to monthly meetings.
And I didn't understand it that way either. And so if I...
Why would I talk about the closing of school, the hiring of staff in the summer, and the opening of school? Why would I reference those three, those three time points if I wasn't talking about summer months and June, you know, May, June, all those months? You know what I'm saying? I'm sorry, I...
Yeah, so, is the solution is to come up with a start and an ending? So, is, do we want it to be at the beginning of budget season in October until deliberative? Do we want it to be from the beginning of budget cycle in October until March?
Well, this was the last regular Budget Committee meeting for the town, was end of February, before the...
March vote.
The vote. So, we have some time to deliberate this and come up with what does everybody agree on, because it's very different than the last time we discussed whether or not school representatives should be at monthly Budget Committee meetings.
I'm going to get checked for all assignments, I think I'm starting to lose it. I really do think I'm starting to lose it sometimes.
Well, I think we all just have a different opinion of it.
Because I have, I had a very strong opinion about that, but I thought, I thought the rest of the board did, too. Okay, other questions? On, oh, Lori, what line? I can't find the legal line, can you? Do you know that?
Let me see here. This is so slow.
It used to jump out at me, but I guess I don't look at it as, I didn't look.
Trying to pull this through. Okay, so we line 450.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there it is. Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this vote? What's that, Lori?
I am, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, approve a journal entry for the fresh fruits and vegetables grant?
This was in your pocket. Yeah. Basically, it's a formality that Molyneux and Heath has asked that I come and just present to you, just in, in terms of being transparent. They would ask me to go, go back through and do some digging on the 2014 fresh fruits and vegetables grant. And through that exercise, I found that...
And through that exercise, I found that there was a portion of the grant that was actually charged to the food service fund and not to the grant. So, so what this memo is, is actually it's a journal entry of $17,847.07. And you'll see my correspondence back and forth with the auditors in which they've asked that I just bring it before you as a formality for your approval. Essentially, the fresh fruits and vegetables grant is that you take in, we probably take in about, right now, probably about $32,000. It's a revenue, and you've got to have the exact $32,000 going out in terms of the labor and the vegetables and prep. And so this did not balance. So this brings it balanced so that our financials are accurate.
So we can go back to the grant in 2014 and make that work?
It's going to be a journal, yes, it will be a journal entry. The funds were received. It's just it was not booked.
It just was charged to the wrong ...
Okay.
Right.
There was, if I'm remembering correctly, a few meetings ago, there was a question as to whether or not the food service provider we had at the time was invoicing the correct ...
That's different.
Is that a different situation?
Yeah. This was still when it was in-house, correct?
Uh, no.
14?
No.
No.
This would have been Academy Services.
Okay.
I was just wondering if this is any correlation to that.
Digging idea, but a different issue.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to acknowledge it or something?
Yes, please. Let me see what she said. They're asking for an approval.
So to approve Lori's making the journal entry to correct where those funds came from.
Move that Lori makes the journal entry, she needs to correct the funds.
Motion by Stan, second by Penny. Discussion?
The documentation that you provided in our folder, it contains an email thread that has additional files. We obviously can't open those when it's a scanned email.
I actually didn't include those because I thought it might have thrown things off because it's where I reconcile things out. It's my reconciliation spreadsheets, but.
Yeah, I'd like to move to table.
Is a motion to table, do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This will hold up all of the audits.
Henry Wilson hot water pump.
A number of them, yes. Larry, you're on. This is a, a piece that was in our budget last year. I had brought you pictures of some of our lovely water pumps, and we replaced two last year, had budgeted to do another one again this year as we're trying to get the ones that were the most inclined to be scary cycled out. And my understanding is that it's come in a little bit higher than we had anticipated based on what we'd spent last year.
The price of the pumps have gone up. Also, the person I was working with is no longer with Siemens, which might be one of the reasons he's no longer there, that he was quoting lower than what they were willing to do, I think. But the, and it could be that they were doing two at a time and not one at a time, so they might have got a discount. The person I'm dealing with now said he just can't quote at the same price as they did last time. So last time it was about $5,000 per pump. It's gone up $6,600. This was, we had money budgeted in to continue doing, trying to do one a year until we got them completed.
So all the ones that we need to replace, we won't have?
This is the one we're doing this year.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we talked about the rest of them, and we kind of put a number on them, so that needs to be readjusted.
It will need to be readjusted, yes. And certainly hoping that anything that's done down the road could possibly be part of that performance contract too. So hoping not to be in this position in exactly the same way again. But wanted, for full transparency, to let you know that it did come in higher than we'd anticipated. It is above the $5,000 threshold, but this was something that we had already in process and then was, oh dear.
And again, the Bellegosses pumps that we have there now, with these, with the four that we've had in there that are direct drive, there hasn't been an issue with any of them. One of the Bellegosses, actually, the one next to the one we'll replace. We just had to replace a bearing assembly in it two months ago, and the bearing assemblies are, if I remember right, it was $600 for the bearing assembly to replace.
Could we get a better deal? I mean, is this the only one we have to replace? Is this, if we ordered two, I mean, would it be?
I could check, but I'm not sure with, I didn't.
Or would that infringe on perhaps a performance contract, though? We may be in a whole different area next year. If we buy one now and have them say, oh.
Right. If it, if we did, if down the road the performance contract comes in, yes, part of this would be redoing that whole boiler room completely.
Not including the $6,600, or are you talking that we would redo it, including the $6,600?
No.
Okay. So even if we bought two with a performance contract, we'd still be okay?
Correct. We have 12 of them in there.
So at this point, we know we have this one that needs to be done. Certainly, there's others that we could add to the list. We know, we're comfortable in being able to cover the difference with this. I don't know if you've sat down to try to do figures for adding another $6,700 or so?
No.
Okay. So.
I can, and I can talk with them and see if we could get, if we did more, if we would get a, if they could knock some off.
It might get us back down to where we were.
What's the cost difference again?
$1,670.
$1,670. I thought that, I thought they were closer to $58 last year.
I thought, but I looked back with, with the two. When we were doing two at a time, it was basically $49.63 per pump.
That's right. That's right. The other had been the individual.
Just another idea.
So do you want to direct us to look at a second one, or are we?
Well, how many do we need to replace? I mean, replacing one.
Eventually, all of them.
Yeah. We've replaced four.
If we have funds to do that, I'd just as soon do two at a time.
Okay.
I can look into it with them and see if I can get the price down more if we do two or something.
Okay.
This wouldn't be done until the heating season's over.
Do you want to table this maybe until we have more education?
Want to table it and get a cost for two?
I can call them tomorrow and start talking.
We can have it for the next meeting.
Motion to table by Linda, second by Penny. Discussion?
Was there a motion on the floor?
No. We just questioned the table.
No, we just discuss it.
We only table motions that are duly seconded.
Do we feel we consider it? Taping minutes before we get to it? I don't know. Okay.
Shall I change my motion?
You, so you're meeting, if you're entertaining a motion, can I just hear the details again?
Just a motion to table.
And a second by Penny?
None of discussable. All those in favor? Aye. opposed? CIP update approval?
What you have.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. What you have is a draft I had done, kind of a table last year of, this is what we're looking at. This now is updated with the work that's proposed in the warrant articles for school year 19, and then moving those other pieces out. Again, it's reshuffled a little bit according to which roofs are now presenting themselves as slightly more emergent and needing to be replaced. And I did move what I could to keep the numbers a little bit more even across the years rather than try to have a large spike in one year. And if we can get grant funding, that will, you know, help with that secondary access road because the longer that that takes to do, the more it's going to cost us.
Do we look for grant funding for that throughout the year? I mean, we're not going to wait until 2022 if it comes up ahead of that.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm looking to see if there's anything ahead. Right now, the only thing that's been a possibility has required a fairly sizable large, sizable matching grant from us, which I knew that I didn't have kicking around in a pocket somewhere to add to it, so.
Okay. Now, this would be beneficial, say, in writing the warrant articles for the budget, correct, in order to maybe set aside funding or create?
Capital reserve funds. Yes, absolutely. Which is why we do.
Yeah. That would help, definitely.
I move to approve this capital improvements table for the CIP.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McLeary. Discussion? Present discussion. Nice job.
Thank you. I'd like to be able to include this with the, the town CIP report is being finalized tomorrow, so this way I can include this for the town report.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Sign repaired at Valley View.
I was so excited.
So I reached out to Mrs. Downs, but I don't think she got my message to see if Alexis Gomoka could join us. I would like to invite her to the next meeting so that we can thank her for her persistence.
Yes.
She was very persistent about the sign being fixed, but you sent me the picture and it looks wonderful.
And I put the picture in the board packet.
I'm looking at it now.
Very nice.
Anything else you just wanted us to know that it was done?
I wanted it.
And, yeah.
Out in the, over the airwaves, that it's complete, it's done, there's no hole, there's ...
I called you at school today, Mrs. Downs. I don't know if anyone told you. So maybe we'll try to get her here because I was impressed with the pride that that young lady has in her school and how she wanted that sign fixed so badly, so.
It would be great to get a picture of her next day.
Yeah, it would be great to have her. Okay, any other?
I have a calendar on mine where we would ...
Okay. So what I have for you, and actually, there is a, just noticed, I'm sorry, didn't do the change myself. I'm going to reverse it, but I will give these to you. You want to take one and pass down. Two changes on the parent conference days. Actually, those need to be reversed, so the early release and teacher workshop day would be the first of the two days, and then the parent conferences would be the second day. Rather than have the kids come back for an early release day on a Friday, which is a little bit tougher to do. So those are reversed, but you had asked for the full day for the parent conference, so those are our change. The only other change there is I have backed up the new staff orientation to Wednesday the 22nd. It had been the 23rd. There is a workshop scheduled for the 23rd. That is a grant-paid workshop. That's not part of the 185 teacher days. That's an opportunity for teachers. Should they choose, they would be paid through the grant to attend for that, but looking to, trying to work in an awful lot of scheduling around presenter schedules and what can be done. And so I moved that so that new teachers would still be able to come, and then that still gives them the Friday to get into their classrooms before the fun begins, so.
A motion to accept the calendar as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept it as presented, second by Mr. Frida. Any further discussion? Mrs. Cardinal?
When, the first time you presented the last version of the calendar, we weren't really clear as to what the problem statement was that drove for parent conferences, teacher workshops, on an early release or not on an early release, to be back-to-back days. And I thought that's what was going to go and be investigated as to, what is our problem statement? Is our problem statement that we want more participation for parent conferences? Or was our problem statement, we don't want so many full-day teacher workshops because we felt it was too disruptive for academic purposes for the students? What was the problem that we were trying to solve by making the revision?
The revision that I understood from the board is that, given the issues with the half-day parent conferences this year, and with the union's reluctance to do evening conferences, and then with there not being any necessarily a, any teeth to my being able to say, you need to stay even if I'm going to give you the part day the next day, to say, no, we'll schedule a full-day parent conference. That's what I understood from that discussion. If I have misunderstood.
I remember there being a directive from the board. I remember we still didn't know what our problem was. Like, what is the problem? That we think we can get more parents to come in on parent conference day if it's full day? Because I remember the discussion was, we don't really think that either because so many parents, both parents work. You know, your traditional work hours.
I think that the concern was, as I heard it, that I didn't have enough teeth to say to staff members, you have to stay even if I'm doing the release time the next day. And so do it as a full day.
I agree.
I still fail to see what problem statement we're solving.
Well, the problem was the half-day for parent conferences and getting teachers to come back the next day for a half-day or ...
It still doesn't tell me what problem we're trying to solve by having half-day conferences.
Either way, we're having.
Whether you have a half-day conference or a full-day conference, and I thought we were even talking about student-led conferences at one point in the discussion. I still, at that moment, I said, I think we have to agree on what the problem statement is before you decide what type of parent conference day you have, whether it's full-day, half-day, or a student-led, or a hybrid of all of those. Because otherwise, we just keep stabbing at, here's a solution, here's a solution, here's a solution, without knowing what problem we're trying to solve. Because we won't know if it solves it.
I thought the problem was that it was scheduled for a half-day, and people didn't like that. They wanted a full day. So that's, I thought that was, there wasn't any problem with it.
I didn't hear that we got that feedback from anyone saying, I want a full day.
No, we got a lot saying that it was.
But from whom?
From a lot of the parents regarding the half-day and then regarding the shortened.
The only complaint that I remember us hearing from parents was the one small subset of teachers that was trying to do a consolidated, quick, round robin conference. I still don't know that doing this is going to get more parents to come in for conferences on conference day.
Is it safe to say that a full day can accommodate more people than a half-day?
Yes.
Is it safe to assume that a full day would get more participation than a half-day?
A little harder to predict that.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking. I mean.
I mean, originally, I have to go and try and ...
Circle back on what the problem that we're trying to resolve is by making any sort of back-to-back non-full days.
I'd go back a year then and say, what was the problem we were trying to solve by going to a half-day?
Yeah.
When we traditionally did full days.
So this is, this is pretty much what we've always done. Well, and I know you don't like to say that, but.
Tell me how it solves the problem. Until we agree on what the problem is that we're trying to solve, I don't think just throwing out more tweaks to the calendar is worthwhile.
I think last year, what I'm saying is, last year was a tweak to the calendar. Prior to that, this is what we did. And nobody said we weren't getting participation. Nobody came in and said, hey, I don't, I don't like this.
And what I had heard, I was trying to put in full day, but going into the evening, and then giving the teachers the compensated time the next day, so they would be here half-day. And what I heard is, we don't think you can necessarily hold the teachers to that, so, and if you don't have that to do, then don't set it up that way.
But even, even allowing for evening meeting times, did you have any sort of information that led you to believe that you would get more parent participation? And I don't want to pick on parents, guardian participation in conferences.
I do remember at the last meeting, we also threw around ideas of how to draw in more parents.
Right. I thought that's what was going to be investigated before we saw a revision to this. Because to me, November is still a problem. It's like, what was the term you used? Swiss cheese. I see November as being extremely disruptive in terms of consistent learning time. Okay? That's why I'll vote no to this revision, for the motion on the table.
Further discussion?
I did wonder. I did wonder as to whether or not, I mean, I do remember myself thinking that it would be best to have it being a full day, but I do, I thought that there was a two, a second part to it as to how best to draw in the students, whether we tie it in as evening, open house. I'm trying to think of all the other suggestions.
Student-led.
But is that, is that part of the calendar?
It isn't, yeah.
Well, no. However, I think that depending on what we tried to do would impact the calendar. I mean, if we were to do student-led conferences, the, by nature, would take longer than a half a day, I think.
Well, and I'm, I'm not looking at a half-day parent conference.
No, 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 exactly. So, I'm just saying, this is, in my mind, this was step one. I think that there was also perhaps some discussion about maybe not having it in November because there were so many days...
It's where it fits at the end of the marking term, though. And so, that part is harder to move.
Okay.
Could certainly tack it on as part of November, the Thanksgiving vacation, but that doesn't necessarily mean we'll have more participation. I surmise we might have less.
At this point, all solutions are a guess, because we don't have any data telling us, parents want this, parents don't want that. Any solution that we come up with will be supported or won't be supported by staff? I mean, it's, this is really is just a shot in the dark. And I thought that's what was being worked in terms of, before we saw another revision of the calendar.
But at the very least, this proposal gives the opportunity to accommodate more conferences.
During the school day, yeah.
During the school day, because we don't, we don't know, but that evening thing didn't work out.
And I do have parent, I do have teachers who do do evening conferences, and they choose to do so.
But to force them, we said we couldn't.
Correct.
Further discussion? Are you going to call for a vote? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any others?
I have the high school schedule.
High school schedule?
And then I have one other other as well.
So, are we, where are we on the high school schedule? I know that we voted in favor of it. I just want to make sure that we don't have to revisit that.
In light of the email that the board has received, I read that in terms of, it's probably a discussion with the association to look at the definitions as they exist in the current contract.
Have any of those discussions happened?
No, because they were told that you would be discussing that tonight.
I responded to, to Mrs. Vashon's email saying that we would discuss how to move forward with her concern. Her concern being that it perhaps violated one of the articles in the master agreement. And I think the only way probably to, I guess, proactively take a look at it is to...
A little sidebar.
Is to ask for an open negotiation to just look at that. Or, I mean, I suppose there's a grievance procedure in place that we could potentially go through as a way of having you look closer at it. I don't know.
I think it would probably be more productive and proactive if we met with the association and said, can we, because she, she does say that she acknowledges that different levels have different needs.
Right.
And so, as this was largely led by the staff at the high school, um, it's not like this has been presented to them, at them, and blindsiding them either.
So, you need a negotiating team from the board, or is that something that...
Yeah.
I think so. I think we should probably have two members from the board that we're willing to sit down with. I don't know if we should default to the two people that negotiated that agreement, or, I don't know, I don't want to just throw you out there.
Right.
But Stan and Angie were the two members that negotiated that agreement. Would you have...
I don't have a problem with that again.
Would you have an interest in, would you be able to do that? Thanks. So, will you reach out to Laurel and just try to, just say that we'd like to? Or do, or do I have to officially send an email to her saying that we'd like to open negotiations for the discussion of that particular purpose?
That might be more vision.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. You said you had something?
I do have another other. Along the issue of subpay, and I'm going to throw this out for discussion purposes, and it may not end up being a resolution this evening, but I did receive an email from a teacher who has done long-term subbing for us, and in that process, became aware of our need for substitutes. And she said, you know, I would love to be there, but your subpay, the daily rate, she said, I, you know, would be there almost daily if there's any way that a negotiated rate for experienced teachers could be part of the mix. And so, I'm throwing this out for consideration, because right now, whether you have a high school diploma or a doctorate, it's the same price. And the quality isn't always the same. We have some folks without college degrees who do a very good job with the kids. I'm not disparaging that at all. But to have someone with an education degree who can come in and pick up those plans and really run with them makes a tremendous difference.
What's your recommendation?
I know that there are districts in the area that with a credentialed substitute will go as high as $100 a day. I don't know that we can necessarily do, I think we have enough left in the lines that we could do that. I don't know if that's a fair differential considering the rest is 65 a day.
Can, I'm just going to make a suggestion that we talked about this after the March vote, because part of our budget was the $75 a day.
Right.
So, that would increase our subpay. It wouldn't make a differential.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't do it for this year.
Right. It wouldn't.
Right.
Just a suggestion.
I just had a question. So, we don't have a standardized, like, a tier in place?
$65 a day, period.
So, if we were to go forward with this, I would like to see perhaps a tier presented stating if they have X, Y, and Z, we would be willing to consider...
At least two tiers.
I think we have to define, what does credentialed mean? Because credentialed could mean you have a bachelor's degree in anything, you have a master's degree in anything, or that you are an actual certified, or you have gone through teacher training. I mean, what does that, you know, we have to look at what that means.
I'm not, I would say credentialed is, holds teaching certificate as opposed to has degree. I think there's, there's, and so, if you wanted to say, you know, no degree, degree, and credentialed, or if you just wanted to say, you know, holds teaching certificate and does not.
So, policy committee?
Angie, you raise your hand to the point?
Very similar to what Ms. McLehany said, was, I'm definitely open to the conversation as one of five board members, so if you want to bring a proposal to the next meeting, and try your best to quantify for us based on who you have in the pipeline for substitutes that you want to attract to say yes when we call them to substitute, what sort of increase in spending would we be looking at more to...
I kind of like the tier you just threw out. Explore that.
Yeah.
The three?
Non-degree, degree, credentialed.
Okay.
I mean, just, this is a second point.
You think for the next meeting?
We'll get you out of retirement. For the next meeting? Is that okay for the next meeting?
That's fine, yeah.
Any others? Anything, Linda? Stan? Angie?
At one point, at one of the past meetings, I did mention that I'd like to toss around the idea of blizzard bags. However, with everything else going on, I'd like to have it at some point, but with the next meetings, I just want to discuss it.
Would you like that on the next agenda?
Well, I don't know. I think whenever we have one that's not simple...
Maybe we can do this season?
Okay.
Would it even be something we could even try this season at this point?
Well, I thought at one point we said, let's give a shot.
Just to give it a sense of urgency?
Yeah.
Or you think, no, it would take too long to get in place?
Good finishers coming up to the end days.
I think it would probably be best put in place for next year, because if you do that and you don't have at least 80% participation, it does, the day's gone. And so, I'd hate to have 70% of kids slog through and then it's still not be...
It's kids and staff.
Kids and staff, right, so...
I don't think it's a bad idea to start the conversation soon.
Yeah, but I think conversation's a good idea, because that way, it could be something that would be in place for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. Any others? Public participation.
Lance Tanner again. I just have a question. I maybe missed it, because I was sitting by the fan and it was really hard to hear tonight, so I maybe missed this. How many students are, can I ask a question? Okay. How many students are currently going to Kingswood for the vocational technical school? How many?
Can we say? I'm thinking it's about 24, but I would have to check.
About 20, that's fine. About 25, okay. Just low was curious about that. The other thing is, do you have, when you were talking about the open house and conferences, is there, is there an open house at each school plus conferences?
Yes.
At each school?
Yes.
Or are the conferences just elementary and middle school?
Conferences are available district-wide.
Okay. And you also have open house at each building?
Correct.
And then the conference, okay. Thank you.
Any other public participation? All right. Well, before we go into non-public, first of all, I would just like to thank those of you that joined in from home, and those of you that came out this evening. This is, this is our last meeting before Election Day, which is Tuesday, March 13th. So, get out and vote. Mr. Frida, good luck with your trying to get reelected this year. Mr. Petrie's here, good luck. I know you're running. Thank you for your interest again. And if Mr. Henry's watching, good luck to you, Mr. Henry, on your bid for school board.
There is a meet the candidates night?
Yes.
Sponsored by the PTA on the...
Wednesday.